Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please, everyone, be aware that this meeting is both being audio and video recorded. And although we've sort of already done this, we'll do it again. We have to announce who's remote. We have Counselor Downs, Vice President Lipoff, and Counselor Lucas is not remote. He's in both places. Well done, Counselor Lucas. And now for the first call reports. Vice President Lipoff for the Land Use Committee.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The report starts on page 541. It was from, actually, 542. It was from our November 14 meeting. And we held the first one, 333-23. Linda Fingera requests to extend nonconforming two-family dwelling use at 27-29 Kilburn Road. Approved 7-0. 336-23, John LaDoyt, request to further extend a nonconforming front setback and nonconforming lot coverage at 62 Maple Street. Approved 7-0. 337-23, Chalak Kehelain, request to decrease nonconforming open space at 35-37 Williams Street. Approved 7-0. 335-23, St. John's Episcopal Church, request to allow for-profit educational use, nonprofit educational uses, requiring a parking waiver, agricultural use and to waive 12 parking stalls at 297 Lowell Ave. Approved 7-0. And 240-23, 290 Watertown Street LLC, request to allow ground floor residential use to exceed by right heightened stories and a parking waiver at 290 Watertown Street. Approved 7-0. I will move the report, but I do have public hearings to also assign.
Vice President Lipoff, I think the first item which you skipped was actually approved withdrawal without prejudice, 328-23.
Yes, it was. Apologize for that, yep. That would be Green RE Real Estate, Green Real Estate West Newton LLC. And 328-23, request to amend special permit 6720 to allow Medical Marijuana Treatment Center at 1089 Washington Street. And 7-0, approved withdrawal without prejudice.
Please go ahead with your public hearings.
Okay. The public hearings start on page 550. And 365-23, request to further extend nonconforming FAR at 286 Highland Ave. Seth and Julia Burr. This is for, all three of these are for December 5. The next one, 366-23, Mary Beth Johnson, request to further extend a nonconforming three-and-a-half story, single-family dwelling at 255 Jackson Street. And the last one, 367-23, Susan Harvey, request to further extend a nonconforming three-story single-family dwelling at 146 Oliver Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crossley for the Zoning and Planning Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The report begins on page 543. The first item is 205-23. It's a petition to rezone lots in Charles Street by Attorney Morris. And they basically were two lots with mixed zoning, and the request was to zone them as mixed use and to make them both the same. This item was before the committee for a second time. It had been sent back to the committee by this council, and on the second time, it failed three to three to one abstention. However, the item has subsequently been, there's a request to withdraw the item. And so I would like to poll my committee, you've all seen the letter, to make sure that you would all agree with this withdrawal without prejudice.
Please go ahead.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? I'm sorry?
I think you need to suspend the rules.
I also need a, I need a second suspension of the rules?
I don't think so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think so, Counselor Crinsman.
We didn't vote on suspending the rules. Did we?
We, I don't think, we haven't, we don't usually vote on suspension of the rules to poll the committee.
We do, Madam Chair.
You wanted me to describe the item.
We do sometimes, and we don't sometimes, I would have to say.
Okay. I described the item. Now, may I have a suspension of the rules, please?
Yes, Counselor Crinsman and Counselor Baker would like us to suspend the rules, so we will vote on that. We don't know if we will suspend the rules or not, depending on the vote.
Okay.
All those in favor of suspending the rules so that Counselor Crossley can poll her committee, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Please go ahead. All right, thank you. Zoning and Planning Committee, all those in favor of accepting the withdrawal, approving withdrawal without prejudice, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or opposition? Thank you. That item carries. The next item is 94-23, discussion and possible ordinance requiring electrification of all new construction and substantial renovations. We basically got an update on this item. We've worked on this for several years, and the ordinance was put before the DOE R this summer, a month before the deadline. We still have heard nothing, and so this item has to go forward into next term. Therefore, the Zoning and Planning Committee voted no action necessary, 7-0. And a new item will have to be drafted. The other two items were held, and then I also need a suspension of the rules. Let me do it right this time, okay, Counselor Crinsman? On the last page of the docket is item 376-23, which is a petition to rezone a lot on Dedham Street, zero Dedham Street. It's Section 83, Block 36, Lot 3A, currently zoned public to single residence one. So may I have a suspension of the rules?
Yes. So Counselor Crossley has asked for a suspension of the rules to accept that late filed item that she just read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Please go ahead. Okay. Well, actually, I think that's it, then, if we may take that into this docket. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Counselor Crinsman for Programs and Services Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The report begins on page 544. On Wednesday, November 8, Programs and Services Committee met. Item 344-23, the appointment of Andrea Tierman-Mitchney as a Newton Library trustee was approved by the Committee by a vote of four to zero. Item 357-23, this is a transfer of $446,104.67 to the Health and Human Services Department. That item was approved by a vote of five to zero. Item 358-23, a transfer of $130,000 to the Clinical Health temp staffing account, was approved as amended by replacing the Clinical Health temp staffing with account number 0150103-531300, the Clinical Health temp staffing, with $20,000 to come from a particular account and $40,000 to come from another particular account. That item was approved, five to zero. Item 314-23, discussion and possible creation of an ordinance regarding vibration control measures was approved by the Committee, six to zero. The next item was held. Items 411-22 and 412-22 were originally filed and included a increase in the application fee. That is no longer part of the item, so those items are now being referred exclusively to Programs and Services rather than Programs and Services and Finance Committee. And then lastly, item 343-23, the reappointment of Nancy Crinsman to the Commission on Disability was approved by the Committee by a vote of six to zero. With that, I will move the report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Downs for the Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Public Safety and Transportation Committee met on Wednesday, November 8. We had one item before us. It was 362-23, Councilors Kelly and Albright requesting a discussion and amendment to shorten the duration of the winter parking ban by about two months. After a very short discussion, Public Safety and Transportation Committee members denied, And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Leary for the Public Facilities Report.
Thank you, Madam President. The report starts on page 546. Public Facilities met Wednesday, November 8. We had two items. It was a 17-minute meeting. We're very efficient in public facilities. The first item is 301-23. This is a request for water main extension on Washington Street. This came before the Committee a second time. The first time, we needed to ask for more information. It came back to us, and the Committee unanimously voted it out, five to zero, in favor. 352-23 is a request for grant of location along Commonwealth Avenue, Grafton Street, Center Street, Ward Street, and Waverly Avenue. This is a very substantial MWRA petition for grant of location for a very substantial water main. Public Facilities approved that, five to zero. And with that, I move the report.
Thank you very much. Counselor Grossman for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The report begins on page 547. The Committee met on November 13. The first item, 354-23, to appropriate and expend $3,000 from handicap parking fines, Disability Commission receipts reserved for appropriations account, was approved, five to zero. The next item, 356-23, acceptance of a $68,000 grant from Mass DEP, was approved, five to zero. The next item is on second call. Item 357-23, to transfer $446,000, excuse me, $446,104.67 to the Health and Human Services Department, was approved, five to zero. Item 358-23, to transfer $130,000 to Clinical Health and Temp Staffing, was approved as amended, and that's because the account designations needed to be updated and to match with the Programs and Services Committee voted, was approved, five to zero. And item 355-23, to appropriate $612,134.74 for the full and final settlement of Anastasia et al. against the City of Newton, was approved, five to zero. I also need to request several different suspensions of the rules. The first is to accept two late filed items on page 552, and I can either do both those items together or one at a time.
Why don't you do one at a time?
Okay, so the first would be for item 377-23, Your Honor, the Mayor requesting authorization to establish and appropriate funds to a debt service stabilization fund.
So let's do that one first, and we need a suspension of the rules to accept that late filed item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay?
Okay, the next is item 378-23, to appropriate $15,000 for elections postage in the city clerk's office.
Okay, we need a suspension of the rules for that late filed item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Very good.
Okay, one more suspension of the rules, to provide a report for a meeting for which there is no written report.
So Counselor Grossman still wants another suspension of the rules, this one to accept a report for which there's no written report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Earlier this evening, we had a special meeting of the Finance Committee to take up the question of tax classification. Mr. Shaughnessy and Ms. Lemieux gave a presentation and answered Counselor questions. We had a public hearing with two participants who testified, and then ultimately, we made a motion to adopt a residential factor of 0.931176, and that was voted eight to zero by the Committee.
Thank you very much. Counselor Laredo for Real Property Reuse Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. There is no report this evening.
Thank you very much. And now we can call the roll.
Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Bowman?
Aye.
Counselor Crossley?
Aye.
Counselor Danberg?
Aye.
Counselor Downs?
Aye.
Counselor Gentile?
Counselor Greenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Grossman?
Aye.
Counselor Humphrey?
Aye.
Counselor Kalas?
Aye.
Counselor Kelly?
Aye, except for item 362-22, for which I vote no.
Aye.
Counselor Laredo? Counselor Leary?
Aye.
Counselor Lipoff?
Aye.
Counselor Lucas?
Aye, with the exception of 363-23, I vote no.
Aye.
Counselor Markowitz?
Aye.
Counselor Noel?
Aye.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
And President Albright?
Aye, with the exception of 362-23, on which I vote no.
And I don't see a 363.
362-23.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Lucas? Can I? 363-23 is what we just took up in Finance.
Oh, 363.
Yeah, 363.
So you're, yes, got it.
Let me read the vote.
Yes, please.
So for the majority of first call items, the votes have a 24 yeas, except 362-23, 22 yeas, two nays, and 363-23, which is 23 yeas, one nay.
Thank you very much. So we have one item on second call before we start our work on the zoning, so I think planning staff and law staff, you might as well stay there until we get to it, if that's okay with you. So now we're on.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I request a five-minute recess?
Counselor, yes, you can, and you have.
All right.
And we will.
Thank you.
So we have a five-minute recess. Okay, now, the first item on second call is 276-23, and that needs to be reported out first from Zoning and Planning. Counselor Crossley, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this is on page 547, because Zoning and Planning took it up a couple of meetings ago. It's item 276-23, and this is the Community Preservation Committee recommending appropriation of $1,967,119 from the Community Preservation Act funding. I won't go into some of the details, I'll let the Finance Chair do that. But this is to give the annual allocation to the Newton Affordable Housing Trust for future projects that meet one or more of the CPA's eligible funding categories. And this represents 35% of the CPA dollars, which is what the CPA voted to appropriate on an annual basis to the trust. So in Zoning and Planning, this was approved, 7-0.
Thank you very much. Counselor Grossman?
Thank you, and I think Counselor Crossley gave the salient points. It was approved in Finance, five to zero. We were joined by Ms. Dada from the Community Preservation Committee, who went over the progress that the Committee has made over the last year in developing program guidelines and an application process, and are now accepting applications for this program, and went over some of the potential applications that they expect to see come forward, and I think the discussion can take it from here on what the important points are that counselors would like to discuss.
Thank you very much. Counselor Gentile, you put this on second call.
Thank you, Madam President. I put this item on second call because I was made aware of a request that had been made and taken up last Thursday. I was actually made aware of the item, and the item that I'm speaking of was a request for $500,000 for the Family Aid project that is currently moving, excuse me, moving along in West Newton at the site of the former Chetwind Nursing Home. Family Aid is working on developing a housing facility for folks that are temporarily without housing, I believe it's 42 units. And the request was for $500,000 in the trust funds. I only became aware of it by, when I was contacted by a constituent. Now, let me tell you what this isn't about. This isn't about me having a problem with the Family Aid proposal. It's quite to the contrary. Since we were first made aware of it several months ago, there have been several meetings through the Mayor's Office, community meetings, public hearing, and I can tell you that the councilors in Wards 3 and 4 have been very much involved. We were out there not too long ago on a Saturday morning at the site, and I use the term that the project has been welcomed with open arms by the Ward 3 and the Ward 4 councilors, because I think everybody understands the tremendous need there is for this kind of temporary shelter. What I want to make sure that my colleagues know is the $500,000 request that went to the Housing Trust, that was done, as they say, after all of those meetings. And up until that request came forward, it had been represented to all of us city councilors that the project would be funded by the state, and that there would be no Newton funds needed for the project. The only money to exchange hands was an assurance that the children who would end up in the Newton Public Schools, that there was a formula by which the city would be reimbursed. So that was the story for months. And as I say, I then became aware, not by the Mayor's Office or anybody else that was involved with this request, that the request had been made for $500,000, and there is also a request of CDBG money for $750,000, so $1,250,000 total.
Counselor Gentile, you need to ask for more time.
I need two more minutes, please.
Counselor Gentile would like two more minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
So I was surprised by that. So my objection is that these funds that I was hoping would be used in a different way, would be used to leverage some other kind of a project in Newton to way, would be used to leverage some other kind of a project in Newton to help provide additional affordable housing. And that the state, as had been represented to us, would stand behind the fact that they were gonna, you know, that they were gonna support this project fully, and that there would be no need for the president, Mr. Siemens, who I spoke with, to come forward and ask for these kinds of monies. So, I find that pretty troubling. I don't really know what I can do about it, because the Housing Alliance Trust, as you know, once we set it up, and once they receive the money, that they can spend it in any manner that they would like. And I, you know, I believe in a way that they will put maybe in the middle a little bit. But again, I want to make sure that you're all aware, we will have the CDBG money coming before us, and it'll be interesting to know what's not gonna get done in our CDBG eligible areas, because $750,000 is going to this particular need that should be fully funded by the state. As you know, CDBG monies go to do sidewalks, to help create or upgrade parks, there's a whole bunch of worthy uses of that money, and now we're gonna be, if that gets approved, now we're gonna be down. So, again, Family Aid project is a deserving and much-needed project. Again, my objection is, is that monies that should be going to other Newton projects are now being diverted, because the state isn't following through on what I understood to be a pledge to support the project.
Thank you. Councilor Humphrey?
Thank you, Madam President. I happen to think that although we're not even voting on money for what's just been discussed since it's already been spent, and we're effectively just voting on replenishing this, I happen to think that this was a particularly great use of Affordable Housing Trust funds. It's a good example of why we decided a couple of years ago, as a council, to set up the Affordable Housing Trust, to have a dedicated body make those type of decisions without micromanagement from the council. And, yes, sometimes initial representations don't pan out when some costs unexpectedly come up, but for essentially the low price of $500,000 to our community, we were able to get, tap into other funds and make over 40 new units of family housing for particularly vulnerable families possible in Newton. That seems like a great deal to me. I'm not really gonna comment on the CDBG stuff, that's federal funds, which I think typically have to be used for homeless families and other similar types of uses anyway. It's federal money that's getting passed through our community, but it's not really our money to decide what to do with exactly. Again, this is, the vote before us is just continuing to fund the Affordable Housing Trust, so that we can continue to have these type of decisions made. But I think that the trust, including our esteemed outgoing colleague, Councilor Bowman, have made great decisions with this, the money that they've had so far, this being an exemplary case where we are welcoming a whole bunch of new families to Newton, who will be Newton residents the moment they move in. So, they are part of our community. The clock is ticking, they're about to be part of our community, and we should be doing more stuff like this. And I think that we're getting a little bit too into the weeds in this discussion, and so I would encourage us to vote to continue funding the Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Grossman?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I completely agree with what we just heard from Councilor Humphrey. I just wanted to clarify that we did hear at Finance from Ann Houston from the Newton Affordable Housing Trust about the application coming in from Family Aid, and that was reflected in the Finance Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to comment? Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I totally agree with Councilor Humphrey on this, but also, I'd like to say that, you know, the people on the Housing Trust that are on our committee are probably some of the most qualified to be on any of our committees. When we set it up, that's what I wanted, and that's what we did, and I'm gonna leave it up to them to decide where these funds are going. But since it was brought up, I will say that, being in the field for 24 years of homelessness and alcoholism, and running over 130 shelters, and I know what kind of shelter this is, it's, they're supposed to be short-term, but they never turn out that way, because we all see the news every day that we can't find housing in the first place for homeless families, and once they get them, they had to move out. And that's what my company used to do, was bring them in, move them out, and try and get housing. And even when I was there before, I was on the council, it got harder and harder. But the best way to fund this is a collaboration. I think as a city, the affluent city that we are, we can throw in $500,000, along with the state and the federal money, which is the way these things work the best, is a collaboration of local, state, and federal funding. So, as I said at the beginning, yeah, it's about replenishing the trust, but I'll leave it up to those professionals to decide where the money's gonna go, and I'm glad it's going for this shelter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Leary?
Thank you, Madam President. As my day job, I actually house homeless families, so I'm so, I was so glad to hear about this project. And the relatively small amount of money, the $500,000 the city is putting towards it, I think is, I will agree with my colleagues who have already spoken, is a worthwhile project. And I also, with the Housing Trust, one of the goals with them was that for them to be able to make decisions, to be more nimble, to make these decisions, and as Councilor Ryan just said, they're very qualified folks who know what they're doing. Of course, I always appreciate Councilor Gentile bringing things forward, because it's always good to have our eye on the finances, and it's good to have these discussions on the floor of the council, just to be sure we know what we're doing, and we know why we're doing it, and the public hears it as well. So, I will support, well, we're not voting for the funding, but I'm in favor of what we're doing with the funds for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Greenberg?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm so happy to hear that my colleagues support this project to house 42 homeless families. And if we find that the project needs more funding, then I'm proud that Newton is able to fund it, to make this a successful project. So, I heartily support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Crossley?
Thank you very much. What is before us is the funding going forward for this year, and I'm sorry to be putting that into question because of how the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust has acted to date, which I think has been exemplary. It's not a lot of money, less than $2 million a year so far, that they get to spend at 35% of the CPA take. And so, there were two projects that were funded this year, both of which, I would say, are, you know, in different ways, amounts of money that helped to close the gap. In the case of the $500,000, I remember them telling us that represents just 4% of what it's costing to renovate this building and provide 43 units of housing, I believe mostly for single moms and their kids. This is real affordable housing. I want to look at, Councilor Ryan was always talking about providing what she calls "real affordable housing," meaning deeply affordable housing, addressing serious levels of need. And there's, you know, we're rarely able to do something like this, and we would not be able to do it if we didn't have this body with its own funding. And I very much hope there can be more funding put into the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust going forward as a result of payments from projects or some other enabling act that the state might give us. And I urge us to give them their allocation for this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wants to speak online? So, I guess we can call the roll on this one. Councilor Gentile, you need another minute. You used, a little, close to six.
One minute, please.
Councilor Gentile would like another minute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Please go ahead.
So, again, I want to stress why I even put this on second call before Greg Reagren accuses me of being anti-affordable housing and sheltering for the homelessness. That's not the case. For months, it was represented to the six councillors that this project would be fully funded by the state. My frustration is with the state, yet again, because they told us that they would take care of it. The meeting on Thursday, I got to it late, so I didn't hear this discussion, but the rest of the meeting that I listened to, the folks on the Housing Affordable Trust were lamenting the fact that they only had about $2 million a year, when they could spend a lot more than that on a lot of important projects. That's the irony of it. If the state would have stuck with what they had told us, they would have $500,000 more in money to spend on something else to promote affordable housing. All right?
Councilor Gentile, you need more time.
I'll, 10 seconds.
Just go ahead, Councilor Gentile.
I didn't put this on to vote against it. I'm gonna vote for it, because the money is needed. I just want to make sure folks know the story of how this went down with the state.
Thank you. Councilor Bowman?
Thank you, Madam President. I hope I make a brief comment, and then hopefully we can vote on this. The reason that Family Aid had to come looking for more money is the original cost estimate was $5 million, and for a number of reasons that we can all, you know, understand, construction costs, increasing requirements from the city, because construction costs got to a certain point that they had to do more upgrades of electrical and accessibility, they had requests from neighbors for fencing and landscaping. So, the project grew from $5 million to $11.7 million. So, the state did increase their amount, another $2 million. And then, the organization is coming up with almost $3 million of its own fundraising to support this project, and then they're coming to us looking to close the gap. And again, this is huge leverage, and I will just say, having been on this trust from the beginning, it's one of the most, even though this is our very first vote for money, I think this is one of the most important things I've worked on in the city, and have been incredibly impressed by the quality of the people who are on that committee, and I don't want to question them when they say, "This is such a good use." And for Newton to be getting $7 million from the state to address a housing need, that is also our housing need. If you become homeless in Newton, there's really no option for you to be housed in Newton today, or very little, you know, one limited program for families facing intimate partner violence. But other than that, there is no other option for you. So, it is time that we step forward and do this. It's a limited amount of money, and I urge my colleagues to not, to obviously, to fund the Affordable Housing Trust for next year, so they can do more good work like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, I think we can call the roll.
Councilor Baker?
Aye.
Councilor Bowman?
Aye.
Councilor Crossley?
Aye.
Councilor Danberg?
Aye.
Councilor Downs?
Aye.
Councilor Gentile? Councilor Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilor Grossman?
Aye.
Councilor Humphrey?
Aye.
Councilor Kalas?
Aye.
Councilor Kelly?
Aye.
Councilor Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilor Laredo?
Aye.
Councilor Leary?
Aye.
Councilor Lipoff?
Aye.
Councilor Lucas?
Aye.
Councilor Malachi?
Aye.
Councilor Markowitz?
Aye.
Councilor Noel?
Aye.
Councilor Norton?
Aye.
Councilor Oliver?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Wright?
Aye.
And President Albright?
Aye.
The motion passes 24 to 0.
Thank you very much. And now, I would like to invite the Planning Department and the Law Department to come join us inside the rail. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Please come join us. So, we're back on 3822, and does everybody have the same list that I'm looking at? Okay, good. So, we have a new order of amendments to address. We'll try and keep this moving from one thing to the next. I'll let our guests get settled. Our first item is going to be amendment from Councilor Bowman.
Madam President?
Yes?
Again, to be clear, these are documents on our desks that are new tonight, right? They're, so we're looking at the same document. One says map amendments, and the other said text amendments?
Yeah, these are our leftover amendments from the last time, and there's a few new ones.
I understand, they're just new presentations of the same information. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. Hopefully, this is a very simple amendment. It was a request from a resident who owns a property that spans two lots, 42 Chesley and 44 Chesley in Newton Center. We have 40, we kept 44 Chesley in the MRT, but we took out 42. And there's currently a two-family house that spans those two properties, and they just asked for the second half of their property to be included in MRT. So, hopefully, that's a pretty straightforward, and we can just vote on that. Thank you.
So, this property that's in green is the property? Is that correct?
Correct.
And that represents 42 and 40?
42 Chesley, and then the one that's just below it is 44 Chesley, and that's currently improved with a two-family that stretches between the two properties.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about this? Councilor Lucas?
I have no problem with this, it's just a process question. If we are going to be adding parcels to the map, do the abutters need to be noticed?
Councilor Bowman, did you say we took this one out?
It was originally MRT, the whole street was.
So, it was noticed?
Okay, but the process question was, if we're adding new parcels to the map, it may not apply to this one, but I think we have some other amendments that we're gonna be adding, do the abutters need to be noticed?
I think there's one other, and that will be from Councilor Danberg, and it was a request of the abutters, so they've been noticed, I mean, they've asked for it. Councilor, I'm doing it again, Mr. Heath? Do you have a comment, or Mr. Lee?
Madam Chair, I can speak to this. The abutters don't need to be noticed. The only notice requirements are under 48 for an amendment to the zoning map, which, again, has been complied with.
You all sit.
So, I said that the abutters do not need to be noticed, the only notice requirements are the ones under 48, Section 5, with regard to amendment to the zoning ordinance and zoning maps, which have been complied with.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? And from the people online, no? So, I think we can vote on this one.
Councilor Baker? Councilor Bowman?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Crossley?
Aye.
Counselor Danberg?
Aye.
Counselor Downs?
Aye.
Counselor Gentile?
Aye.
Counselor Greenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Grossman?
Aye.
Counselor Humphrey?
Aye.
Counselor Kalas?
Aye.
Counselor Kelly?
Aye.
Counselor Crinsman?
Aye.
Counselor Laredo?
Aye.
Counselor Leary?
Aye.
Counselor Lipoff?
Aye.
Counselor Lucas?
Aye.
Counselor Malicki?
Aye.
Counselor Markowitz?
Aye.
Counselor Noel?
Aye.
Counselor Norton?
Aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
And President Albright?
Aye.
The motion passes 24 to 0.
Thank you very much. The next one is from Counselor Danberg.
Thank you, Madam President. This item, which is to add the lots on, at Highland and Elliott, 49, 51, 53, and 53B on Winchester Road, on Winchester Street, actually it should read. This property is the yellow brick office building that is bordered by, on one side Winchester Street, on another Curtis, on the third, the T-tracks in the back. And if we need to, in the future, look at noticing, there will be a lot of notices required because it's the cemetery. So it will be difficult to notice that. I am, however, going to withdraw it today because it should, although I think this is a perfectly reasonable request for it, and I hope it will eventually go through, it became obvious that this should really be a part of the full corridor study that we do on Needham Street. So I will withdraw the item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, Counselor Wright, you had those three historic, they're all in the Newton Center area, right? And since we're in Newton Center and Newton Highlands, why don't we take that one slightly out of order and do it now, which was number eight, I believe, on this list? Mr. Lemel, do you have that information? Yes, you do.
So my amendment is to remove three Newton Center National Registry of Historic Places lots. Two of the lots are not counted towards the MBTA units because they're over 30,000 square feet, 93 Union Street and 1299 Center Street. And the other one is 1931 Herrick, and that would be approximately 44 units. And they do not break the continuous lots. At some point, it would be helpful to get these landmarked, but in the meantime, to provide some protections for them is to remove them from our zoning at this time. The underlying zoning still remains, and so it still can be redeveloped.
Comments from, questions from the counsel, Counselor Bowman?
Thank you very much. So again, I think the same comments I made when we looked at some of the properties in Newton Highlands, Ward 6 councilors did meet extensively on every single historic or iconic building in Ward 6, and met with Doug Cornelius, who's the chair of the Newton Historic. And his counsel to us was, we can't landmark every building in Newton that we want to save. And that landmarking, you know, does put a very great burden on the property owners when they go to do even simple things. And that he thought the most important thing is that we just make sure that the zoning isn't much stronger than what is currently built there. So all of these properties, with the, so we'll start with the Herrick Road and Union Street properties. They're very beautiful properties. The Herrick Road one has just been added on to, or added next to. These aren't properties that are likely to change just to build another, you know, half-story on to them. And, you know, so we were not concerned about them. The church building, which is the building at the corner of Center and Beacon Street, there's a historic church in the front, and we didn't expect that much would happen to that. But there is a nonhistoric building attached to the back that currently houses two preschools. And, you know, I am concerned about taking that out because I do think that that's an opportunity for maybe something to be done in the back that would support that church being maintained as a church in a public space. It's quite beautiful. This is the First Baptist Church. If they were able to do something in the back, but if we take it out of the VC3 district, it definitely makes a huge difference. So if we had to have a compromise here, I'd be, you know, I guess I would be okay taking out the Herrick Road and the Union Street. But I definitely feel like the Center and Beacon Street, one of the best things we can do to preserve that property is to enable them, you know, an option to modify the building in the back, which is 1968 to 72, just bad office building looking. So it doesn't match well with the church. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Laredo?
So I'm just going to remind all of us that putting something in or not putting something in, in the VCOD area, doesn't change the ability of someone who's currently there now to, via a special permit, do almost anything they want. And that's traditionally how we've worked with somewhat iconic properties. It's, and having served now in the Land Use Committee for perhaps too many years on one committee, but I like it, I will say that we approve the vast majority of the petitions before us. We do it quickly. We do it succinctly, but we put some safeguards in. So if we have an iconic building that we're trying to preserve, and there's some abutting portions of that parcel that someone may want to change, that might be perfectly fine. But I see no harm in asking those folks to go through a special permit process if they're going to do something on a property that does house an iconic building. That's all we're doing here. And absent the safeguard, if you put this in VCOD, then that building could potentially be demolished, even though it might be unlikely as a matter of right, and then something else goes in there. So I think this is a very reasonable ask of Counselor Wright. I don't think it caused any harm. I think in particular, as she noted, this does not change the math in terms of our compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. So again, it seems to me a reasonable ask, and it does, again, I want to be clear, it does not forestall people making changes to properties. It just puts a little bit of a higher standard in there to do so. And I think in this case, that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Counselor Danberg?
Thank you, Madam President. If we look at Newton Center, I've lived in Newton Center now, a block from here, for a little over 40 years. And in that time that I've lived in Newton Center, there was, has been only one property that has been redeveloped. That was what I refer to as the old Pete's Coffee Building. It's now two banks. And that property owner, I spoke to several years ago about the building, and what his, whether this was a building that he built in the way that he would have built it, had other possibilities been on the floor or on the table. And he said that under no circumstances would he ever have gone for a special permit in order to build that building. And it is a one-story building because that's what he could do by right. And that has been, that has held true for all of these years in Newton Center. And I'm only speaking for Newton Center because that's what we're dealing with here. The church building on the corner of Center and Beacon needs to have the ability to do something with that rear portion, as Counselor Bowman has explained. I think she explained it very well. In order for that iconic building to be able to be saved, and we're, as a city, now putting seven figures into restoring the tower because that's the only source of money that we could find, that the church could find to do it. And unless we want the tower to come down, the city has put up CPA funding for it, we need to help our buildings be able to sustain themselves. And the only way, or the best way to do that, is to zone them so that they can make the decision to use the building in the way that they can best get their financial reward from it. So I too would not be, I suppose, opposed to removing 93 Union or across the street, the 1299. But I don't think it's necessary that we do that. I'm going to vote no on this. But let's hear what the feeling is on the council. But please, do not touch that church building from VCOD. We need that to stay in there.
Thank you, Counselor Crossley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, a question through you to the Planning Department. Could you please tell us all the size of the three lots in question here?
Sure. I can look at that. I can say two of them are over 30,000 square feet, so they would still require a special permit. One of them is between 20 and 30,000, so it would require site plan review. I also just wanted to note that all three would have an 18-month demolition delay.
Thank you very much. That's what I wanted to hear and for everyone to hear simultaneously. I really applaud the Ward 6 councilors for the work, the collaborative work they did going through all of Ward 6, and in fact, the rest of the city as well. The reason, I understand, we have overlaid the VC districts on churches and temples is to give them some by right use opportunities. As we all know, we've all seen temples and churches lose their congregations. And many are struggling today who are still in business. Their ability to add to the rear of the building, or even to take in uses that are not currently what they have, could be the difference between sustaining their use or not. So they have a childcare center there. Why should a church, especially a church with a struggling congregation, we probably all have experience with this in our own congregations, where finances are tight, really tight. And space rentals can make a huge difference in allowing the congregation to move forward, just trying to make it a little easier for the people who run these things. And there's, I think it's disingenuous to say that that church is in danger of being razed because it's in VC3. It's just giving it the opportunity to survive. So I do hope we keep these maps in Newton Center, our largest village, and our central village, a chance to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a brief comment on 19 to 31 Herrick. I happen to know a little bit about that building, and I'm worried about the condition it's in right now, the interior, not the outside of it, the exterior. And I'd hate to lose that building in Newton Center. So I don't know if we can split this up, but I'd be willing to vote with Counselor Wright on that bill, on that lot, except I wouldn't on the other two. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Wright, do you want to respond to that?
I'm willing to take a vote on each property separately. I just want to make a note, yes, Newton Center hasn't had much development or, but in West Newton and Newtonville, there has been a lot of projects approved by special permit that are only three stories, four stories tall, or even taller. So it is possible to approve projects in Newton Center. And I think we're going to see a lot more with doing things by right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes?
Question?
Do you want to speak? Or is there a process issue?
Yeah.
I will, no, I'll get to, I'll get to you. Counselor Kelly, and then I'll get to you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm happy to hear Counselor Wright say she had intended us to vote on each one, which really makes my questions moot. I was particularly concerned about the church after listening. So I'm glad we're going to be voting on it individually. And I'll do that then. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a point of information. There, in the church site, there are two parcels that are not included in black. They're not the church property. They are something, something else, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Ms. Kyra, do you know the answer to that?
You know what, they, there are parts that are VC3 that are on the corner.
Are you talking about the parcel that is along Beacon Street?
Yes. And then there was a piece behind it that looked like it was part of the vacant. I didn't know if that was, that's a parking lot? Okay.
Yeah. So the one along Beacon belongs to the church, and then the one to the west of that? Are you talking about 860?
And then 1301, is that what, and that's a, that's not part of the church parcel? That's not part of what's being proposed?
Correct. 1301 is not part of it.
And then just one other question. In my understanding, while we're voting through all of the recommendations of the zoning and planning committee, if we take something out, and there's a future desire to make a parcel available as part of the VCOD process, as I understand it, is that, and we can ask the Law Department, would that be in order to be returned to this VC zoning at a future time, even if it was removed at this point?
Counselor Baker, are you talking about a future amendment to expand the VCOD or to include other parcels?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So even if we take it out tonight, it could come back in a future time, as I understand it, if the church wanted to propose that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, is there anybody else? Counselor Downs?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to point out that those two parcels, which does not include the apartment building, the church, and the other one on Herrick and Union, are over 30,000 square feet, if I heard the Planning Department correctly. And that means they would be subject to a special permit anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you just clarify, Ms. Kyra, which ones are subject to special permit, and which one is not?
Sure. So Center Street and Union Street would be subject to special permit due to the lot size. And Herrick Road would be subject to site plan review.
That's great. Thank you very much. Counselor Wright?
Counselor Danberg?
Councilor Danberg?
Yes, I'm, what, what if it is, if a property is subject to a special permit anyway, for what reason would you remove it from VC3?
Are you asking that to a person?
I'm asking, yes, the Councilor Wright through the chair.
Councilor Wright?
The reason why it's subject to special permit right now, because it's over 30,000 square feet. They can come in and request us subdivide the lot into two 15,000 square foot lots, and then they can do it by right. Or they could do 28,000 and do the other, you know, 6,000 something else, and that is all by right. So you lose the special permit. I have spoken, actually, a developer has talked to me about doing exactly that. Once we pass this, he has a conglomerate of lots, and then he's going to add and divide so that it makes it out, so it's all by right and not by special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Danberg? Councilor Danberg, you need to ask for more time.
Another two minutes.
Councilor Danberg has asked for another two minutes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no? Go ahead.
Okay, I have known the owner of 93 Union Street for many decades, and that building is an iconic building that was built in the late 1800s, and that building isn't going to go anywhere. It's, it, it spans, it covers pretty much its entire lot. It's, it's the iconic building in all of Newton Center. And that family is not talking to a developer to do anything with that building at all.
Okay, you didn't need the extra two minutes. Councilor Wright?
I did speak to some small businesses on Union Street, and they told me their property owner has come to them and said, and making them sign a document that says, okay, we don't have plans for development, but if we do, you cannot sue us. And that's what those small businesses, that's their property owner, is making them sign. Thank you.
Go to the chair, please. That, that building is not one of the buildings that the property owner is discussing at all. There are other properties on Union Street that, that both that owner, and in fact, around Beacon Street also, that that owner owns. And the building next to 93 Union Street is owned by a different person whom I also know, and he has no intention of doing anything with that building at all. And so if they are, if they are discussing doing anything with any properties on, in that neck of the woods, it would be the properties that are cheaply built, one-story properties, and not 93 Union Street at all.
Okay, Councilor Bowman, and then Councilor Lucas.
Thank you very much. So I don't know if we could get an opinion from legal about the subdividing of the property at Center and Beacon, but while you're thinking about that, I'd almost say it doesn't matter. You know, if, if what we're looking to do is to create opportunities for some infill development, that seems like a very good opportunity, and to support iconic buildings being able to be preserved. What if this could be subdivided, and the church could sell the lot behind it, use it to, to maintain the building and, you know, in perpetuity or otherwise, and allow some much-needed housing, maybe some additional retail and commercial use on that bottom floor? I think that, from that aspect, this would be, you know, a good site for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Lucas.
Thank you, President Albright. Just a process question going forward, and I guess starting with this map here to planning. If you could state if this was a priority lot or not, because that would make a difference, and just so that folks who are here in the chamber or at home who don't have the maps in front of them, that would be helpful for all of us to understand. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Kyra?
Right, so the parcels on Herrick and Union were priority streets, but the church on Center Street was not.
You all said, Councilor Lucas? Okay. Anyone else? So the suggestion has been made that we vote these properties separately, so shall we start with Union Street?
Aye.
Councilor Bowman?
No.
Councilor Crossley?
No.
Councilor Danberg?
No.
Councilor Downs?
No.
Councilor Gentile?
Aye.
Councilor Greenberg?
No.
Councilor Grossman?
No.
Councilor Humphrey?
Aye.
Councilor Kalas?
Aye.
Councilor Kelly?
No.
Councilor Prinsman?
No.
Councilor Laredo?
Recused.
No.
Councilor Lipoff?
Recused.
No.
Councilor Malachi?
Aye.
Councilor Markowitz?
No.
No.
Councilor Noel?
No.
Councilor Norton?
Aye.
Councilor Oliver?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
No.
Councilor Wright?
Aye.
And President Albright?
No.
So the vote is eight ayes, 14 noes, and two recused.
Okay, let's start, let's go to Herrick Road.
Aye.
Councilor Bowman?
No.
Councilor Crossley?
No.
Councilor Danberg?
No.
Councilor Downs?
No.
Councilor Greenberg?
No.
Councilor Grossman?
No.
Councilor Humphrey?
No.
Councilor Kalas?
Aye.
Councilor Kelly?
No.
Councilor Prinsman?
No.
Councilor Laredo?
Aye.
Councilor Leary?
No.
Councilor Lipoff?
No.
Councilor Lucas?
Aye.
Councilor Malachi?
Aye.
Councilor Markowitz?
Aye.
Councilor Noel?
No.
Councilor Norton?
Aye.
Councilor Oliver?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Councilor Wright?
Aye.
And President Albright?
No.
Vote is 11 ayes and 13 noes.
Okay, and the last property on Center Street?
Aye.
Councilor Bowman?
No.
Councilor Crossley?
No.
Councilor Danberg? Councilor Downs?
No.
Councilor Gentile?
Aye.
Councilor Greenberg?
No.
Councilor Grossman?
No.
Councilor Humphrey?
No.
Councilor Kalas?
No.
Councilor Kelly?
No.
Councilor Prinsman?
No.
Councilor Laredo?
Aye.
Councilor Leary?
No.
Councilor Lipoff?
No.
Councilor Lucas?
No.
Councilor Malachi?
Aye.
Councilor Markowitz?
Aye.
Councilor Noel?
No.
Councilor Norton?
Aye.
Councilor Oliver?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
No.
Councilor Wright?
Aye.
And President Albright?
No.
Vote is eight, eight ayes and 16 noes.
Okay, so that takes care of that one. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Yes, Councilor?
Point of information, can you please remind the councilors to use their microphones when you're at home? If they don't, you cannot hear how they're voting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. And now we can move to West Newton. We have a new amendment from Councilor Kelly. We can start there.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise tonight to speak on behalf of the property owners and businesses in the Border Street Harvey Place neighborhood of West Newton. I propose an amendment to the VCOD that respects their property values, follows stated city goals, and is compatible with good planning practices. We've all received some emails currently from the owners along Border Street, both individual letters and a collective one from numbers 7 through 97 Border Street, which is the full span of Border Street, all businesses along that street. My amendment is simple. I want to keep the VC2 and VC3 designations that are currently being shown at the last iteration that we saw, the third iteration, on the 3.1 maps, and add numbers 25 to 97 Border Street, including 11 and 13 Harvey Place, to VC2. Those are all on the north side of Border Street, which would then be abutting the MRT zone, and keep the currently proposed VC designations and add numbers 24 to 38 to VC3. These are three properties along the south side of Border Street that abut the Mass Pike and the railroad tracks. The changes to the previous zoning maps of versions 1 and 2 began with the councilors' concerns over occasional flooding on the street. This is an environmental issue man-made by the MWRA, which the city council should not conflate with our Village Center zoning role. Appropriate state through the MWRA, federal FEMA, and local, the Conservation Commission and the city's environmental engineer are the bodies that should look into that, and I do believe we should try and help fix the occasional flooding on the street. The city council is updating our zoning ordinances. This is our goal now, is to reflect the, enhancing our villages, supporting locals from all businesses, increasing housing opportunities near public transit and in the village centers. That's our goal. These family-run, small, local businesses include Mariano Landscaping, Joanne Langion Dance Center, Automatic Laundry, Felix Doolittle of the Paper Mouse, Caruso Brothers Landscaping and RP Homes Plumbing and Heating, to name a few that are probably familiar to you. Many are second- and third-generation businesses, the kind of family-owned and run, small, local operations that we want to thrive. Most live in Newton. None are absentee, long-distance, out-of-town property owners or investors. It's a very pragmatic and reasonable group. I met with them yesterday for the first time because they only learned about this and realized that the councilors who they thought were helping protect them weren't. So I only got involved with this last Thursday and through the weekend, which is why it's kind of a late amendment for where we're at here. They've all been very willing to negotiate some of their own preferences for the best plan overall. If you look at the proposed map, you'll see the sense of how the zones and colors are distributed fairly, consistently, and with continuity, contiguity. Please support this amendment, the stated goals of the city, respect and help to these local business people. Where else would be more appropriate but in this area, next to the train tracks and the Mass Pike and the Village Center at this edge to do something like this? Thank you.
Councilor Wright, before I, Councilor Wright, before I go to you, let me ask some questions of planning. So do you, do you happen to know how many units this involves?
So first, I think we would want to clarify from Councilor Kelly exactly which parcels were included in the amendment. As you can see here, there's a couple of holes, one on Border Street that is 49 Border, and then 83 Border. So we just want to see if the intent was to include those.
Yes, I'm sorry, 49, I had sent all these addresses to Zach yesterday and today. 49 is included.
Great.
93, I see, is included. That little one at the corner?
83?
Yes, is not. That is a private property owner that no one was able to get in touch with. It's a residence, it's not a business or commercial use.
Okay, so for, if we included 83, it would be about 450 lot, 450 units. Let me just look at what we're getting from 83 real quick. It's, can't be much, it's not that big of a site. 83 is about 18 units, so, you know, we're getting about 430 units from this addition.
Okay.
Right, I had included 83 Border, so when you take that out, you're about 430.
Okay. So, Councilor Wright, you're first.
And Councilor Malachi, you want to speak to this. So first off, this street has some minor flooding, like knee-high, twice this summer, and it has happened in the past. And I'm not objecting to, to upzone this area, but I don't think it should be done tonight. I think some more work needs to be done to analyze the flooding, and we, and part of it, we know, is the MRT, but what can we do to mitigate the flooding that we're getting? And we'll get more and more of it. So I do not support upzoning these lots tonight. I would support looking at this after the New Year and looking at including these lots at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Malachi?
Yes, thank you. So the background on this, for people who aren't familiar, is that in the four years I've been on the city council, I first became aware of the flooding issue, and it was maybe starting after a long gap of not having had a problem in 2020. And there have been four floods that I'm aware of that were flooding the street since. The owners at the time, three, three years ago, when I started trying to get DPW to take a real interest in this and try to find a solution, they felt they were being neglected by the city, they were on purpose to force them out. The condition of the street itself, it was unpaved, it had been unpaved for a long time. They felt in the whole that the city was neglecting them and didn't care about them. This year, the street did get paved, it got new curbs, so that part is looking better. But as yet, there is no solution that I've been informed of to deal with the flooding issue. During the, the big August 8 storm, the one in which the library lot also flooded, that was, you know, knee-high water, it can subside very fast, in about an hour after the, after the rain stops. Typically, it happens when there's like two inches of rain in an hour. The August 8 flood, as I recall, we had 2.7 inches in a very short time. On that day, Needham got five inches, Bilirica, Needham six, Bilirica seven. Since then, Lemonster's gotten... six, Bilirica seven. Since then, Lemonster's gotten ten inches in a different storm. We are so unprepared for what could happen easily to us that has happened to other towns. And I hope that the fact that the planning department is now comfortable with upzoning the street means that there will be a commitment by the city to find a solution. And, you know, I think Counselor Norton has suggested there should be a, at least citywide, study of the stormwater issues. I think that needs to happen, not just for Border Street, but for a whole lot of other parts of the city that might not even know what they're in for as the storms get worse and worse. So I wonder if anyone from the planning department can, you know, address the question of what possible remedies you might have learned about from DPW and their consultants? Because all I can think of is, you know, a way to get over the obstruction at the end of Border Street, which would also affect downstream by giving them their water faster, some way of, you know, capturing the water and, you know, containing it in some giant underground tank upstream, or improving the absorption capacity upstream. We didn't even, when we approved the funding for the McGrath Playground, we didn't even, there was not even a thought given to daylighting that stream, which is, you know, something that's being considered downstream at Albert Marle Field. So, I mean, I'm not a hydrology engineer. I don't know what the solutions are, and I'm hoping somebody can assure me and assure the businesses that there's going to be a solution worked toward because otherwise you're just giving them kind of an empty designation that won't really help solve the underlying problem. Thank you.
Ms. Kyra, would you like to, I don't know if Counselor Kelly talked about what the cause of the problem is as far as you know it?
Yeah, I think DPW is probably best able to address the questions with flooding. This is something that they have been dealing with for some time, so that's not something we can opine about. We haven't, the planning department hasn't taken a position on this tonight, so I want to make that clear for the record. Counselor Malachi?
Okay, Counselor Kelly, did you want to respond?
I can just give a quick answer of what I know to that, to try and put the flooding issue perhaps on the back burner.
Go ahead.
We've all seen a map that declared this zone with yellow hatch lines as a flood zone, but the...
Get closer to the mic.
Closer to the mic. Thank you. Sorry. The environmental engineer for the city and the environmental planners, Jennifer Steele and her assistant Ellen, have told us all that Border Street is not deemed to be a flood-plone area. They confirmed that the FEMA website doesn't list it as a Zone X, which is an area of minimal flood hazard. What's happened here is that somewhere, it's some question about exactly when, in the perhaps early-to-mid eighties, MWRA got an easement from the city to install a culvert under Border Street that ends at Elm, and it was either a bad design or poorly installed or is broken and clogged. So what happens now during those big floods is, for about twenty minutes, the street does flood, and then it slowly sinks in. The neighbors don't feel that it is, it's not a natural man-made climate change problem. It is something that can be fixed and engineered. And I think we really have to work on that. I don't think that we should alter our zoning around the village centers and transit-oriented development and housing around this. This is a solvable problem that we do not have the solutions for, as Counselor Malachi said. It's a man-made problem. Development and market-driving forces will solve it. People are not going to build here if they can't build here, but that's the cause of it. It's the culvert that was installed under the street.
Thank you very much. Counselor Crossley?
I really appreciate that Counselor Kelly has raised this issue again, and carefully and honestly worked with the property owners in this area. Most of the business owners are, own the properties. And to actually help them out, what's really disturbing about the letters that we received is that, under the guise of trying to help these business owners with a flooding issue caused by poor engineering, to, you know, use that as a way to eliminate the zoning for this area where these property owners in particular really want this zoning. And it's an area of West Newton that is really perfect for this. And I agree with Counselor Kelly, when you, we also have a stormwater ordinance. It's very detailed. The regulations are many, many pages and quite specific, that we passed through public facilities a couple of years ago. That doesn't allow you to build any horizontal structure below the water table. In fact, it has to be above the high-water table. So this area would have to address the stormwater issue before it could develop. That's something that any prospective developer or any of these property owners are going to encounter if they try to redevelop any of these parcels. But new development, as we have seen in the past, even though it takes us a very long time to get from one place to another, new development actually provides the city with resources, and the projects themselves can provide resources to correct situations like this. Not saying it's going to be easy. How it was explained to me more recently is that there's an MWRA water main that somehow transects the stormwater, the culvert, and so it constricts the flow. However that happened, I have no idea. As a point of information, in the 1970s, I actually had a job on Border Street for about a year. There was no flooding then, so I don't know when this occurred, and it's a problem, but it's irrelevant to zoning. So I, you know, I'm concerned about the four hundred and fifty units only because we seem to be playing a math exercise here, where folks are wanting to get down to the MBTA unit capacity number, which we all should know is a fictitious number, as far as, it's not, that we all should know it's not a build-out analysis. That's been made very clear. If that's what we're doing, and that's what we feel we need to do in order to get a good package passed, then I suppose you'll vote against this. I am going to vote for it because I think it's the right thing to do. And what we decided we were going to do, as Counselor Kelly made very clear, is support the several goals and objectives that we have been committed to for three years, and do the best job that we can in each village individually. So it's about the third time we've gone through, twice in committee, now once on the floor of the council, every village and every parcel. And that's great because the more people who understand this, the better. But I will vote for this and add the four hundred and fifty units and take my chances with whatever else people have in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to be real brief on this. I hope we all read the emails from the business owners, and they are small business owners, and a lot of them do live in Newton, and they've been here a long time. And if that's what they want to do, I mean, how many times do we get requests to upzone? That, I think that's what we should do. So I'm going to be voting for this amendment. My family settled in West Newton in 1865 on River Street, and we used to, with my great aunt when I was growing up, and traveled all the way over that side of Newton. We used to walk by Border Street and that whole area, going to St. Bernard's Church. And so I know the area. I've known it, being a lifelong resident. I know West Newton very well. And if this is what these owners and these small business owners want, then I think we should do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Laredo?
Two points and a question, and I, just to be clear, I have not made up my mind on this particular one, and I want to listen carefully to the discussion of my colleagues. But number one, I want to remind everybody that byright projects don't provide the type of benefit that we get with special permit projects, where we can turn to a developer and say, "Do certain improvements as part of getting your special permit." So let's just all recall that. If you look at Trio, for example, which we approved via special permit, we got a significant amount of additional benefits for the city in terms of traffic and so forth. So I'll just put that out there. Second, I think Counselor Wright is correct that there's nothing that will prevent us after January 1st, or January 15th, or January 30th, from adding any particular area to a zone. And if we find, after appropriate due diligence, that we should do that, I would certainly hope that the future council does that. The third point is a question to Ms. Kyra and Mr. Heath. I think I heard Counselor Crossley say this, but I'm not clear. How many units are we talking about if you change the zoning here?
It's about four hundred and thirty.
And where are we at right now? Because I want to understand where we are compared to where we're supposed to be, as a minimum.
We are currently at about ninety-one hundred.
So this would get us to over ninety-five hundred, close to ninety-six hundred?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to be clear on that, and thank you very much.
So can I ask Ms. Kyra to clarify? I believe the INI money that we ask for as a council and use for mitigation funds will still apply, but I'm not sure I'm correct. Could you speak to that?
Yes, that's correct. So typically, the mitigation money in a special permit is a portion of the INI payment. Engineering has, the DPW has the authority to say whether up to seventy-five percent of that payment could be redirected to other infrastructure improvements. So that is typically the money the council is looking at as a special permit mitigation fund. That would still happen with byright projects. The INI fee still applies, and the commissioner of DPW still has authority to redirect up to seventy-five percent of that money into a fund for other infrastructure improvements, and it would be up to the city council how that money ultimately gets spent.
May I respond to that, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Madam President, excuse me. I agree and appreciate what Ms. Kyra said about INI, but that is not the only extra money we get when we allow special permits. Witness Northland, for example, obviously a very large project, but far more money came to us and far more items came to us than mere I to I. Same thing with Riverside. If I recollect correctly, the same thing with Trio. I do not think their contribution was just limited to INI. And if I'm incorrect, I stand corrected.
So...
Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. So Trio, I believe, was before the INI payment change. So previous INI payments, before we had the ordinance, were much lower. The city greatly increased, we made up for lost time where we hadn't been increasing the cost, you know, one of the factors in that calculation. In doing so, around the same time, we created the ordinance that then gave the city the ability to redirect some, up to seventy-five percent of those funds. Projects that came in prior to that, you're correct, the mitigation package was likely separate and apart from the INI payment. Since then, Northland and Riverside may be the exceptions, as they are quite large projects. I would need to look at the orders to confirm whether it went beyond, because our INI payments were, I think, ten million up. They're not insignificant payments. We're not seeing any projects of that scale in the village center zoning, just to be clear. But your standard mixed-use projects that come in for a special permit, typically that mitigation package is the portion of the INI that can be redirected.
I don't want to belabor this, Madam President, but I've sat in land use for a long time now, and I appreciate that we changed our ordinance fairly recently. But part of the special permit process goes beyond mere I to I payments. That's the whole idea of special permits, that we have the ability to request from developers above and beyond what's required by ordinance or by right as a condition of getting a special permit, and we vary that from project to project. That's all. I don't think we can or should or need to debate that further this evening. I do think it's a valid point, and I appreciate the clarification on the INI change, which is helpful reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. So there are lots of people who want to speak on this one, and it's already nine-thirty. Just to caution, to be as brief as you possibly can. Counselor Gentile?
So to Counselor Laredo's last point, in Riverside alone, there must have been, I think, quote, "six million dollars in additional benefits to the area of Lower Falls and Auburndale." So we do a pretty good job of getting additional funds for additional purposes, and a big part of that money was this extensive path projects that you're all aware of, that Mr. Chapman pushed hard for. But anyway, the reason that I'm rising, it's not clear to me how things are zoned currently in this area and what the proposed changes are. So I'm hoping that somebody can just quickly explain that, because I too went to St. Bernard's. I went to St. Bernard's, not just the church, but St. Bernard's Grammar School, okay? So I too am very familiar with the area, but it's not clear to me where the zoning currently is and what changes are being proposed. Counselor Crossley confused me a little bit because she made it sound like we were removing units to get down to eighty-three, thirty, but that's been clarified, that we're talking about increasing the number of units if this goes through, correct?
That's correct.
So that'll get us to about ninety-five hundred. Important number to keep in mind because the buffer now is getting close to a fifteen percent buffer, which will be important to remember when we discuss Auburndale. But if somebody, maybe Counselor Crossley, could just explain quickly what the changes are, I'd appreciate it.
Maybe Ms. Kyra could do that for us?
Sure. The current zoning is manufacturing along Border Street, and the area that is outlined in blue is proposed to be included in the VCOD and Zone VC two. The area outlined in red is proposed to be added to the VCOD and Zone VC three.
And so, as of right now, they weren't proposed to be in the VCOD at all, correct?
They were removed as part of a prior version. So in committee, there was a vote to remove Border Street. They had previously been in, similar to this, as VC two and VC three.
So it came out of planning to be similar to this. It was removed, and now we're being requested to put it back in. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bowman?
Thank you very much. So just on the comment of special permits, for those who haven't spent time on land use, these are all very small properties. And I would imagine if any one of them came for a special permit, you know, the fact that we would ask them anything beyond the INI payment, maybe one additional affordable unit, very small elements. In fact, we had a property that came that wanted a special permit to redo their parking lot, and I asked simply to redo the sidewalk in front and add a little more greenery, and that was too much for that project. So I just think the financial reality of a special permit in this process is that we're not going to be getting, these aren't at all comparable to the twenty acres, twenty-plus acres we saw at Riverside and Northland. And I think that I am supportive of this project, especially because I see it as an opportunity to improve the current infrastructure as properties are redeveloped. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Norton?
I'm very familiar with this area. I was asked to meet with the business owners several years ago, and so I met with them, saw the video of the flooding, saw photos of the flooding. years ago, and so I met with them, saw the video of the flooding, saw photos of the flooding. There's been repeated flooding there because of this MWRA pipe. So what I don't understand is what protection there would be for new owners if we were to rezone and they can rebuild, redevelop by right. This is not a small investment. This is getting MWRA to fix something that they did. So I could see with a special permit that that conversation would be forced, but otherwise, that's my concern. Otherwise, I would be comfortable with rezoning this area. Our conservation agent, Jennifer Steele, if she says that this area is not naturally flood-prone, that it's really related to this MWRA pipe, she's a very accomplished and knowledgeable person, so I would accept that. But right now, that's not the case. Right now, it does see significant flooding frequently. So that would be my question. And otherwise, you know, if there's some sort of certainty that the future owners would be protected, that that's, I think that's the proper role for government, to be protecting them. So that's, I guess, my question for the Planning Department. How would we protect future owners when it's really the MWRA that would need to fix this?
Ms. Kyra?
I don't know that we can answer that question. That's a decision that a property owner would have to make.
If I would just comment again, then I would not feel comfortable making that change, and I think it would make sense to put this off till the next term, when you can all figure it out without me.
Okay. The next one is Counselor Danberg.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for Ms. Kyra. On the 400 units, if the total is 400 units and not 1,600 units, it's my understanding that the MRT, the MBTA number of units that are acceptable, that would be added into the MRT, is 25% of the VCOD and not the entire number. Why would that number rise by 400 and not by a quarter of it?
So the 400, approximately 430 units, is the number of units that the model calculates when you add in these properties on Border Street. The 25% you're referring to may be the amount of mixed-use area we can count, and this would be outside of that. This, when it was included, was not designated as a priority street requiring ground floor commercial. I would assume, if it was to be brought back in, that would say the same. It would not be brought in as a priority street. So the 25% would be irrelevant here. It's just a straight calculation of the zoning capacity for these parcels.
I see. Thank you.
You all set, Counselor Danberg? Yes. You're all set?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Kalas?
Planning Department. So why were these removed in committee?
So that may be more appropriate for a member of the committee to respond to.
Mr. Crossley, could you respond?
Thank you.
Well, I feel like we were duped, honestly. You know, yeah, I said, "I feel like we were duped." You know, we had a conversation, we were also, I would say, late in the process of considering amendments, and with what appeared to be a real uncertainty about what was causing this flooding, you know, we thought, "Okay, let's table it and see what else comes to light here." So, and we were late in the process, too, where frankly, I think we had five meetings going through amendments, imagine that, of this very nature and some of these very same sites. And I think that people just wanted to move on. That's my honest answer, not maybe very satisfying.
Thank you. The one comment, for me, this is difficult. We have a lot of amendments coming up that are all about reducing the numbers. My preference is to actually get to those and then see where we're at, to see if we should be adding. Adding at this point just seems a little premature. So I'm going to make that motion to lay it on the table, if I could do that.
So Counselor Kalas has made the motion to lay this on the table and come back to it. Do we have to vote on that?
Could I speak to that?
Counselor Kelly?
I just want to say that I don't think that this neighborhood should suffer because they're coming after the other neighborhoods have had their numbers calculated in, and that we should prevent them from what might be fair and consistent zoning, because we're concerned that other neighborhoods' roads or blocks have already gotten numbers that we're now becoming uncomfortable with, because they're coming last. I don't think it's fair for us to say to them, "Because we're at the numbers that we're comfortable with, you guys don't get to do what might be the right thing."
Counselor Laredo?
I actually feel a little differently. I agree with Counselor Kalas about laying this on the table for the moment, because in my mind, if we make other changes elsewhere that reduce our numbers to, you know, 8,400, let's say, notwithstanding the concerns about the flooding, I could see us wanting to add back so we have some appropriate buffer level. This is a pretty large number of units. I think the concerns about flooding are legitimate. I appreciate what Counselor Norton says. I'm sorry she won't be here with us next term to help address it, but I would suggest that we lay it on the table. I see no harm in doing so, and perhaps some benefit and some clarity for those of us who are struggling with this, quite frankly, as to how we might vote.
Okay, so let's take a vote on that. How many, I think we'll have to call the rule, because it's, yeah.
The vote is on laying it on the table.
Pardon? The vote is on laying it on the table.
Aye.
Counselor Bowman?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
No.
Counselor Danberg?
No.
Counselor Downs?
Aye.
Counselor Gentile?
Aye.
Counselor Greenberg?
No.
Counselor Grossman?
Aye.
Counselor Humphrey?
Aye.
Counselor Kalas?
Aye.
Counselor Kelly?
No.
Counselor Kritzman?
No.
Counselor Laredo?
Aye.
Counselor Leary?
No.
Counselor Leboff?
Aye.
Counselor Lucas?
Aye.
Counselor Malachi?
Aye.
Counselor Markowitz?
Aye.
Counselor Noel?
No.
Aye.
Counselor Oliver?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
President Albright?
Aye.
The motion passes 13 to 12.
Wait, 13 to 12?
Oh, no, sorry, 13 to 11. Sorry about that.
Quickly adding in my head, that was the right.
Counselor Allen.
Okay. The next item will be still in West Newton, and this is Counselor Wright. And so, Counselor Wright, you're on.
So I'm proposing for a portion in West Newton to go down to VC-2. And my reasons are, in 1990, the National Registry of Historic Places said, "West Newton Village Center, historic district, the most historically intact village in Newton, with significant and diverse architecture. The newly proposed VC-3 by right zoning will put intense financial pressures on teardowns in our historic village. The $500,000 no-bid Washington Street Vision Plan states, 'Maintain the prominence of historic iconic buildings in the village cores.' The core of the village centers are one to four stories." And then, my next one, I'm going to get a little geeky here. "We're not following the intent of the law. The state wants more housing on Rapid Transit, the Green Line, than the commuter rail. They require commuter rail with Rapid Transit to, they require community with Rapid Transit to increase their zoning by 25% compared to 15% for the commuter rail. Using that ratio, the Green Line should have 1.7 times more housing. This is 5245 versus 3,085. On top of that, there are only two commuter rail villages in the count versus four Green Lines. At the most, only 30% of the housing should be on the commuter rail. West Newton alone has 2,200 units in VC-3 compared to 1,500 units in Newton Center, and Newton Center is two to three times larger than the core of West Newton Village, and that's just looking at the core village." Finally, "Most residents want the lower scale in the village centers. The Newtonville Area Council survey, 82% wanted four or less stories. More people responded to this, 2,500 responses from wards one to three, most affected by the change, than any other planning survey on the subject within those wards." So I'm not removing all the VC-3. We just added 460 units, and my estimate, this is, oh no, that's tabled, sorry. And my estimate, this was going to be, I think, around 400 and some units, because originally, the Planning Department took out all the VC-3, which is, was not my request. That's about it.
So the map, just to clarify, is some of this the Border Street business, or is this all?
No.
No?
If they go farther, you can see, if they go a little bit farther, you can see there's VC-3 to the west, VC-3 to the east. So there's a lot more of VC-3 left
Yes.
in West Newton.
Yes. What was confusing me was that the Border Street things that we just discussed are also in this map. But ignore that. Ignore everything that is outside the box that Mr. Lemel has just provided for us. So it's by Elm Street, Washington Street, these properties here, Watertown Street. Okay, comments from the council? Any comments? No comments? We're ready to, Counselor Bowman?
So, I'm sorry, can I hear from the Planning, I'm getting a little tired. I was just quickly, was having trouble following the numbers that we heard from Counselor Wright about the MBTA units by Village Center. Could maybe you bring them up on the screen so we could look at those?
Can I say something? So this is just VC-3 that I was referring to, the units in VC-3?
Well, I don't know that we care, so that, thank you for clarifying that. I don't know why we, I think what we care about is the total number of units in a village center. So I think it's, for purposes of comparing West Newton to Newton Center, what we care about is the total number of units, especially, I mean, I could say, the total number of units, especially VC-2 and VC-3, because those are more the mixed use. I think just comparing VC-3 between the two, I'm not sure how that is particularly relevant. But if you could please pull that up, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Are you able to do that, Ms. Kyra?
I may need a few moments, though I don't have that readily open.
Okay. Counselor Wright?
So the reason why it's relevant, VC-3, that's the highest density, and it is lopsided in what we're doing. We're not following what the state wants, which, if we had just a commuter rail station, our increase would be 15%. So that's saying, that's the type of density that we should have. But now that we have the Green Line, we need 25%. So the difference between 15% and 25% is 1.7. So the Green Line should have 1.7% more, but it's more about the higher heights and the density in a small area. That's what most people are concerned about, is actually the density.
Okay.
So I'm still looking for those numbers, but I did want to point out that we are, there is probably about 30% more units in Newton Center than West Newton. The 15% versus 25% doesn't mean that that's how it should be distributed across transit. You know, we provided in our memo of November 3rd, some charts showing how the by right unit capacity is distributed amongst the commuter rail and Green Line stations. And we did include Auburndale in that as well. And we showed that, as far as total units, there, it's split about 50% along the Green Line and 43% along the commuter rail. If you look at land area and look at the time, the entire VCOD, 49% was along the Green Rail, Green Line, about 24% commuter rail, and 27% other. So I think we are, the proposal is following sort of the intent of the law, where there is more housing allowed along the Rapid Transit line than the commuter rail line.
Counselor Crossley, and then I'll come back to you, Counselor Wright.
Well, I want to thank Ms. Kyra for that summary, and I think the memo from, I think, November 3rd is a very important one, because there were allegations by Counselors Wright and Oliver that we were overloading the north side and not putting enough on the south side, because they were measuring that by density, whereas this is actual units and land area. So we have more actual units and more land area along the Green Line than along the commuter rail, which Ms. Kyra just gave the particulars on. So we should not be following some kind of false presentation of the relative scale of things on one side of the city or another. It's done enough damage already. So understanding that we have, and I understand if you include, you include Auburndale as one of the villages along the commuter rail, that split is still heavy on, along the Green Line versus the commuter rail. There's so many other things in here, I'm not sure exactly where to start. But let's start with historic buildings. We have several landmark buildings in West Newton. It's a unique village that I always thought we should, you know, stand at Judith's and look down the street, that very wide street, the widest street in any village of the city. And of course, it's an entry point to Newton, not necessarily for good. There's a lot of, a lot of traffic that comes through Washington Street here, coming from the Pike, coming from the exit ramp and so forth. And it's a very, very wide street, and it's been difficult to calm. So if you're looking from Judith's, which is, oh my gosh, I'm going to forget, the not Elm, not the Elm Street corner, but the, it is the Elm Street corner, thank you. So you're standing there, and you can see all the way down. West Newton is very interesting, because you've got the Unitarian Church, significant, that great big, large parcel, next to Tody's. And that's not going anywhere. Again, this is VC-3, and we're just trying to give additional uses to the society so that they can continue and have some options. It was Counselor Wright who wanted to add VC-3 across the Pike to the other church property for the same reasons. Next to that, across the side street, is the Santander Building. That's an historic property. As we all know, we passed a special permit to add to it, but keep it intact and repurpose it. Everybody loved that project. That's not going anywhere. You've got the public properties across the street, in the middle, where...
You've got the public properties across the street, in the middle, where we have our police headquarters and a park. Those aren't going anywhere. Also important historic edifices in West Newton. Further down, we have landmarked the pie-shaped lot. What do we call that?
Davis.
Thank you. Where the pizza place is, and the plaza. Lovely. So you have a nice focal point that's not going anywhere. The rest of what you have is pretty much one-story, a couple of two-story boxes that replaced many buildings that at the turn of the century were three and four stories. You know, this Washington Street corridor was a bustling place when there were trolleys and the vehicles were just beginning to come in and so forth. The street's so wide that you really could
Councilor Crossley, you need to ask for more time.
Oh, 30 seconds, please.
Councilor Crossley has asked for 30 more seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You know, what the VCOD can provide over time is a more interesting streetscape and more life, and yeah, a little more housing. On another note, but I'll need more time, I would really like to begin a discussion about the numbers and what they really mean.
Councilor Wright?
So I'm proposing to move this down to VC2, which is four stories tall, which was, as Councilor Crossley said, you know, three or four stories were along the street. That's what I'm asking for. And, to note, the nice Santander project, Mr. Corff is right now holding off until we pass the zoning, and that project will change. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Oliver?
Great, thank you, Madam President. Wasn't planning on speaking to this item until I was called out. Nope, still can't do it? Man, I can't stand these things. I have been talking loud. But, I think really, my only comment here has got to be, stop BSing with the numbers. I counted units with Councilor Wright. I counted acres, and I did math. The density in this area, based on the lots that are proposed to be upzoning, is six times higher than the MBTA Communities Act is recommending Newton zone for. Don't shake your head, it's just math. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else that wants to speak? Councilor Baker?
I just want a point of clarification. I'm just trying to find it in the reference, cross-referencing to the Planning Department memo. Do we have clarity of the estimate of the number of units that are affected by this proposal?
So, I believe Councilor Wright said it was around 400. I would just need to check our
No, all right, but that's the order of magnitude for this, right?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Councilor Greenberg?
Thank you, Madam President. I will not support this amendment. This is exactly what we wanted for the VCOD. It's feet away from the train station. It's surrounded by the Pike. It will have little impact on the neighborhood. This is a perfect spot for VC3, so I would like to keep this VC3.
Thank you. Councilor Crossley, you'll need more time.
I might need two minutes, because I have to ask for some maps.
Okay.
I said I might need two minutes, because I have to ask for some maps, and that will take a little time.
Okay. Councilor Crossley needs another two minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. I put in the packet some maps that compare the Washington Street Vision Plan, which are conceptual maps, in terms of numbers of stories, to the plan that is before us. And I'm hoping that you can call those maps up. There's a, I think one slide, it could be two slides, comparing the West Newton in the Washington Street Vision Plan to the West Newton in the VCOD. And the reason, the reason to look at those is there's a lot of comments, and then I'll talk about numbers and BS. You know, there's a lot, been a lot of comments about what the Washington Street Vision Plan recommends. And there's, the comments are somewhat, they would lead you to believe that we're going somehow way beyond it, when in fact, if you look at these maps, and I'll, I'll sit down if they take a while to find them, but there's a memo in the packet. There you go. You know, whoops, nope. Not a meeting. Okay, so these, you can see that the Washington Street Vision Plan allows up to six stories in the area, part of which Councilor Wright does not want to change, which is more, in most cases, than what we would add as our four and a half stories, unless you have some mission-driven affordable housing developer who wants to add another story and can get the funding to do that. And you see that there's up to four stories where the church is, and on part of the block that is along Washington Street, and the Davis Block is up to six stories behind it, and so forth. The blue, up to six stories. The red, up to four stories. The yellow, up to three stories. Pretty consistent. Not the same, not identical. In that plan, it was conceptual. When we adopted that plan, it was really not to, there was not zoning attached to it. We never got to the zoning. We used it to help inform this plan, and got down into the nitty-gritty, street by street, parcel by parcel. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I think I'll leave it at that, because we can see this map. We have one for Newtonville as well.
Thank you, Councilor Wright.
So as you can see from this map and what I suggested, pretty much, most of in the pink, is what I suggest to be VC2, which is four stories tall. And according to Washington Street Vision Plan, it says up to four stories. And then, we do have some projects that are going to be six stories, even though we're only zoning it up to five stories, that are Dunston East. And people can go and do a special permit, or MU4, to get higher heights in those areas too. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Councilor Malachi?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, in addition to Councilor Oliver's point about the very high density being proposed there, this is, this is more of a linear village center than, for example, Newton Center. And, as came up during the discussion of the Santander Project, not a lot of easy parking. And it just does not lend itself to having a proliferation of high-density areas without any required parking, and where, where are the people going to park when they come to visit the center? You know, it's not a, not a very friendly walk over the, the bridges over the Pike. You know, it's a lot more open feeling and noisier than, you know, crossing the T-tracks in Newton Center. So I think that's something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this.
Aye.
Councilor Bowman?
No.
Councilor Crossley?
No.
Councilor Danberg?
No.
Councilor Downs?
No.
Councilor Gentile?
Aye.
Councilor Greenberg?
No.
Councilor Grossman?
No.
Councilor Humphrey?
No.
Councilor Kalas?
Aye.
Councilor Kelly?
No.
Councilor Krenzman?
Aye.
Councilor Laredo?
Aye.
Councilor Leary?
No.
Councilor Lipoff?
No.
Councilor Lucas?
Aye.
Councilor Malachi?
Aye.
Councilor Markowitz?
Aye.
Councilor Noel?
No.
Councilor Norton?
Aye.
Councilor Oliver?
Yep.
Councilor Ryan?
No.
Councilor Wright?
Aye.
And President Albright?
No.
The vote is 11 to 13.
11 to
Sorry, 11 ayes, 13 ayes.
So, so
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay. We are now going to leave West Newton. And we are going, wait a minute, are we leaving West Newton?
Point of order, Madam President?
Yes, Councilor Laredo?
I, I just want to get a sense of how long we're going to be going this evening, so we know, and members of the public know, we clearly have a lot of work ahead of us still.
So, I, the other night, we stopped at 10:30. I think we should do it, a check at 10:30 and see where we are, and if we want to just call it a night.
I would, I personally do not, just personal request, I do not think it is good business for major decisions to be made at 11 or 11:30 at night. I'd suggest we adjourn at 10:30.
Thank you for that. Okay. So the next one is, oh yes, we do go to, we go, do go to Newtonville now. Councilor Lucas?
So I guess we're starting off on Walnut Street, corner of Walnut and Austin. Give me a second, let me just get ready. So, the request is to rezone those parcels on Walnut and Austin Street from VC3 to VC2. The request is simple. As I put in my memo to the Planning Department in the Clerk's Office earlier this month, the building heights and density on Walnut Street, which are currently zoned VC3, should not be the same for Washington Street. Simple as that. A lot of Washington Street is VC3, Walnut Street should be VC2. The Washington Street Vision Plan, which is part of the city's comprehensive plan, which was passed in 2019, said that the maximum building height for Walnut Street should be one to four stories. One to four, VC3 is five. And I talked about this in ZAP. The Washington Street Vision Plan was a promise. It was a promise to the people and businesses in Newtonville, that the, that the building heights would be four stories high. And I, reason why I keep filing this amendment over and over again, it's to make sure we keep our promises. Otherwise, these vision plans aren't worth anything. We paid half a million dollars for that vision plan on a no-bid contract, and, you know, I was sitting back there when the vision plan was passed. And I didn't like everything in it. There's some things I do like in it. But the fact is, it passed, it's part of the comprehensive plan, we need to follow the comprehensive plan. And if something has changed to Washington Street, or Walnut Street, or Newtonville, nothing, I haven't seen anything in the last couple of years that has made me think that we should abandon the Washington Street Vision Plan. You know, when I first met with Planning earlier this year, or it might have been last year, this was one of the very, very, very first things I said to them, was that the building heights on Walnut Street should not be the same on Washington Street. And, you know, the Planning, in their memo, earlier this month, they wrote that this would be a reduction of approximately 40 units, four zero units. And I said this in ZAP, and now we have more information now. There is going to be a 40B in Newtonville, behind Court Street, behind the Whole Foods, behind the Kraft Street Senior Housing, that's going to be, as of right now, 300 rental units. A very, very dense project is coming to Newtonville. So I am asking for a reduction in 40 units. Keep in mind, we're probably going to get somewhere around 300 units that probably will be built in the near future. So that is the request, to go from VC3 to VC2 on that corner there of Walnut and Austin Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak to this one? Anyone? Ms. Kyra, can I just ask you, we, we didn't discuss this in West Newton, and I meant to ask you about it, but the, the economics of VC3 or VC2 in the core of the village centers, could you just talk about that? Because that's something that we talked about in ZAP.
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. So, we did work closely with an economic consultant in developing the zoning. We did not do test fits in every location, but generally, and we did some typical test fits for VC3 in the core of village centers, VC2 as you start to move out, and MRT, at the time, VC1, you know, further out from there. The, we didn't test VC2 requiring ground floor commercial in the core of the village center. So I would have some concerns there, that, that may not be feasible, that may vary by location. But when you're requiring ground floor commercial, and so you're only allowing two and a half stories of residential, that's not something we tested. We are, I did mention this at the last meeting, but I think it's worth raising again, we are in the process of doing an economic feasibility analysis, as required by the state, to allow us to apply our current inclusionary zoning requirements to the overlay district. As I think many people know who have been following the state guidelines, the default is that we allow for 10% affordable housing at 80% AMI. To deviate from that, you have to do the economic analysis to show that development is still feasible. We don't know what that looks like if we remove or downzone significant portions of VC3, particularly where we are still requiring the ground floor commercial. That analysis is currently underway, but I would just want to raise that as a potential issue, because what we are using as part of that justification are, you know, recently approved projects, which, the mixed-use projects tend to be five stories, the purely residential may be four. This is an area where we would be requiring mixed-use as currently laid out.
Thanks very much. Okay, Councilor Wright?
I, I find it surprising that we're putting in zoning that is not economically feasible. And many of the other villages that we did propose zoning for were VC2 with first-floor retail. I have a question to Mr. Lee that he didn't answer earlier. What are the requirements for a developer to add lots or subdivide lots? What type of approvals do they need to do that? That doesn't go in front of the council or anything, does it? Thank you.
It depends on what the frontage requirements and the underlying zoning is. It depends on what the frontage requirements for the zone, applicable zoning ordinance is. So then, the short of it is that you can do something called an A&R Plan without any approvals, that basically, it's approval not required. So then, if you meet the frontage requirements, you have adequate access on an existing way, then you can actually subdivide without any, any formal approval.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And then, if you don't meet the frontage requirements on a qualifying way, then you would have to go through subdivision control, and our planning board, acting as a board of survey, would then just go through this fairly lengthy process to make sure that there fairly lengthy process to make sure that there is going to be adequate access and the lots are going to be properly served by required utilities.
Okay. And maybe a question to Ms. Kyra. My knowledge is there's no frontage requirements in VC2 or VC3.
That is correct. Not per the zoning. There are practical frontage requirements in that you don't build a building unless you can fit a certain amount of circulation, typically double-loaded corridor. We would expect some aspect of parking on these sites, even if it's not required. So there's a practical frontage requirement, which is why we were not recommending a minimum zoning frontage requirement.
You all sit. Counselor...
I think Ms. Julie wants to speak.
Oh, sorry.
Madam President, if I could just add one more thing, where when there are no frontage requirements by operation of law, there's a minimum of 20 feet for frontage, just added in there.
Counsel Bowman?
Thank you very much. I share the concern about what would happen if this... If we weren't able to financial... If we weren't able... The feasibility of inclusionary zoning didn't work in this MBTA because we certainly don't want to lose that. I was just taking a quick look to just remind myself. If we're looking at just the properties that we have designated for MBTA communities, the villages, almost all of the ones where we require businesses or where we hope to have business on the ground floor are VC3. There's the handful of VC2, mostly because they butt up against, like where Bill's Pizza is, because it butts up against, directly up against residential that we haven't rezoned. But the primary part of them are VC3. And I do understand from talking to both affordable housing developers and other developers that, you know, sometimes retail is... Can be a lost leader. And they don't necessarily always count on being able to rent that out, to pay that out. So if we are requiring retail to be on the first floor, I think there has to be a certain level of density. So I'm supportive of more VC3 in our Village Centers. And, you know, and again, this is where we want more housing. This is where young people want to be, where seniors want to downsize to. I met a lovely young woman who was just getting ready to rent at 28 Austin Street the other day when I was sitting outside, and she was thrilled that she's able to move home to Newton where her mother lives, and move back from Miami, and have this fun, walkable place. And she wishes there were more, even more of these in Newton. So I think that it's... While it may seem like just a few units, those are... If the reduction here is 40 units, it's 40 fewer families or young people or seniors that will be able to downsize to our Village Centers. So I think the impact is significant. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Laredo?
A question for our Planning Department. I just want to be refreshed here. Is Walnut Street considered a priority street?
Yes.
All right. So as a priority street, does every... Do all the VC2s and VC3s have to have first-floor retail?
That's correct.
All right. So as I'm looking at the map, most of this is VC2. Is that right?
That's correct, based on recent amendments to reduce it. It was initially proposed as VC3.
But right now, it's VC2. It's required to have first-floor retail. And obviously, if it's VC2, we believe, colleagues, that VC2 with retail on the first floor is feasible for the vast majority of this area. I think Counsel Lucas's amendment, if I'm not mistaken, Counsel Lucas, is just that area on the corner of Walnut and Austin. Do I have that right? Or... And if I'm not, please correct me. I'm getting the thumbs up from my colleague from Ward 2. So I guess all I'm saying, colleagues, whether you want to rezone this or not is a discretionary judgment on your part, but I don't think economic viability is a valid argument here, if everything else is VC2, and we seem to accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Crossley?
So Counsel Wright, you said you find it surprising that we would... Counsel Wright says she finds it surprising that we would zone for something that's economically infeasible. Well, we have been trying not to zone for something that is economically infeasible. But however, amendments have prevailed where we are less certain about the economic feasibility of the VC2 we've already passed. It could be that that is going to compromise our ability to get the inclusionary zoning ordinance passed. It could be that that will diminish the opportunity or the probability that those lots will develop at all. We've compromised quite a bit already, and I think, you know, we do know, I believe we know from our studies, which were reasonably conservative, reasonably reasonable inputs, that the 4 and 1/2 stories can subsidize as-needed first-floor retail, and, you know, that it is feasible. We're less certain of lower buildings. So I guess I'll leave it at that for now.
Counsel Wright, I'm going to come back to you after Counsel Leary.
Thank you, Madam President. I think Counsel Crossley said it very well. I'm actually concerned about significant housing getting built, especially in this environment. All that... Up here, all that blue was the... Was the... Used to be red. We have significantly cut back on the VC3 in this village. One of our most vibrant villages with a lot of opportunity, potential. People have been really happy with some of the new developments that have gone in, that have brought in not only new housing, but also new stores and more walkability and open space. So I think enough is enough. The economic viability is already... Whether it's VC2 or VC3 is questionable. We want to give every opportunity to make this zoning work. We've worked three years on it. We've gone over these zones, the same zonings, two or three times, and I'm just not willing to compromise more. I think we've compromised quite a bit. I want to see... The VCOD is a wonderful project that we've worked on for many years. It's had so much input, so many smart people have worked on it. And yes, we've had pushback, and some of it is beneficial. It's good to hear the other side. But I'm not willing to compromise anymore in Newtonville.
Thank you. Counsel Wright?
Whatever we zone here, the VC2, we can come back. If it's not working, we can come back and rework it. But if we upzone everything VC3, I think there will be a floodgate. And it will cause other problems down the road. Right now, we have approved 2,500 units over the last three years. And that's by special permit and by 40B. And people say, "Oh, it's too hard to build buildings by that." But yet, we have 2,500 units that have been approved, with hundreds more coming down the pipeline. So we're talking about 8330. We're a quarter of the way there that we have approved. And now 90% of it is actually not in the Village Center. So now we're saying, "Let's upzone the Village Center that much more." There is going to be a lot of production of housing. If they can do it by special permits or by 40B, they'll easily do it by right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Danberg?
Thank you, Madam President. If you take the numbers that Brookline has done, and those are probably dubious numbers, but based on the ratio of the 6990 units that Brookline was required by the MBTA to zone for, and the number of units that they have suggested are probably likely to be built, I think it's in the neighborhood of something like 1,500. And if you apply that to Newton, then we've got a couple of that... If we get 8,000, then 8330 or 9,000. If we were ever, in the next 50 years, to build 2,000 units, that would probably be a lot. So I just want to remind everyone that we are zoning for, we are not building. And the likelihood of the majority of these being built is very low.
Thank you. Counsel Lucas?
Thank you, President Albright. Just want to respond to some of the things that I heard. Counsel Leary was concerned about the loss of housing if we go from VC3 to VC2. I hope I got that right. As I said, we have 300 units coming into Newtonville soon. There's a 40B going up on Craft Street, Maguire Court. That is happening. There's going to be a community meeting on December 2nd, by the way. I was going to send out an announcement on that. But we have more housing coming into Newtonville, okay? We had the Oakley Spa Project. That's currently in the courts right now. I think that was 28 units. We did Craft Street Senior Housing. That's what, 170, 180 units? Okay. All I'm asking for is to bring it down a story. The Washington Street Vision Plan was a promise, and I want to make sure we keep our promises. There are people on this side of the railing who voted for and endorsed 4 stories on Walnut Street. Not me. I was sitting back there. Endorsed 4 stories on Walnut Street. Let's keep our promises.
Thank you. And I'm going to call on Counsel Norton, and then come back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. So the map doesn't show the whole area, but if you look at the map on your desk, there's a lot of red. There's plenty of red coming to Newtonville. We're just trying to prevent a canyon effect in the narrower streets. It's a pretty small request. I would urge our colleagues to vote for it.
Thank you. Counsel Wright?
I'd like to clarify Brookline's numbers. And even though they're zoning for 6,800, most of the area that they're upzoning already has multifamily, which was by special permit. So now they're going to allow it by right. So it's already there, that housing. Where the additional housing they're going to see is just along Harvard Street. Where we're doing most of our zoning right now, we don't have housing there. So it's a good thing. It will add it. But it's not the same... You can't compare apples to apples with Brookline. It's a different situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to be clear, though, that how many units are at Austin... 28 Austin Street, we have 60... 68 units, and how many is that in the plan? I think it's 120.
No, it would be 0 because it's over 30,000 square feet.
Ah, okay. And the same goes for Trio.
Correct. Trio is the same.
Okay, good. Counsel Crossley?
Okay. This is about the numbers and math, or fuzzy math. Look, yeah, if you're measuring density, because you have a very small area and you're going up high and you don't have a lot of spread, that area is going to be a higher density, units per acre, than if you have the same... A larger area and you have the same number of units, right? We should be counting the number of unit... Actual units and actual land area. It just so happens that on the south side, we have more land area to spread into, especially using the lowest-density districts. So the numbers are higher for land area and number of units, according to this MBTA formula. But let's talk about the MBTA formula. It's a compliance formula, and that's all it is. It is not a build-out analysis. Certainly, we have learned that by now, despite how some folks have presented this to the public. It is not only not units that we are going to build, we are not building any units. The city does not build any units. We don't have to build them. We don't have a timeframe within which we can... We must build that number of units.
Counsel Crossley, you need to ask for more time.
Two minutes, please.
Counsel Crossley would like two minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
So for round numbers' sake, let's say our capacity formula gives us 10,000 units. We all know, I think, that the denominator is 1,000 square feet. We figure out how much floor area we have in our district, and we divide by 1,000 square feet. Because of hallways and entrances and amenities and stairwells, you figure roughly, you take 20% off that, and you get a unit size of 800 square feet. All units are not going to be 800 square feet. What if they're 1,200 square feet? That reduces your total unit count by a full third. We're not adding parking. Our sensitivity analyses in zoning and planning showed us that if you add one parking space requirement... Not building. We know people are going to build parking. But if we require it, we would have to increase the number of units dramatically because our unit count in the formula, which is just a formula, goes down by about another third. Then there's what's built on the ground. There's already units on the ground, right? And as President Albright was suggesting, and there are examples of... I use this one particular because I took... Got the numbers for it. In Woburn, there's a 24-unit condominium that you all gave a special permit to, that we all gave a special permit to, now fully complete. On that site, the formula would give us 68 units. That takes 68 units out of the compliance formula. Nobody's going to take that building down. Beautiful 24-unit building where the unit sizes are much larger than 800 square feet. Nobody's going to take it down to build 68 units. They have what they have. There's so many different conditions around the city. You say that Brookline isn't like us. Nope, they're not. We're not like Brookline. They're not like us. It's a different proposal that they have, a different formula. Their guesstimate, however, is probably very close to ours when you factor in all of the millions of variables, or let's say dozens of variables, that will impact whether or not a site is buildable and the probability of whether it will get built. So my concern is that this is a modest proposal, getting more modest by the minute, by the amendment. Will we get anything? Will we get very much at all? And it's not just about looking at what other special permits and what other Chapter 40B projects are in the pipeline, or approved, or waiting for the construction industry to recover. Because those projects aren't where we want them. We want them in our Village Centers because I think...
Counsel Crossley, you need to ask for more time.
I'll just... The sentence, and I'll be done.
Okay.
I think we care about the economic survival and stability and, you know, of our Village Centers. We want the customers right there.
Thank you. I think we are ready to vote on these. These are three amendments. We can vote on them one at a time. Right?
We are... I thought we are only voting on that corner, Austin and Walnut. We are not voting on the three parcels on Austin Street and the Swedenborgen Church on Highland Ave. This is just Austin and Walnut.
So this conversation was just for the Walnut Street piece?
Yes.
Okay. Just Walnut Street.
Counsel Baker? Counsel Bowman?
No.
Counsel Crossley?
No.
Counsel Danberg?
No.
Counsel Downs?
No.
Counsel Gentile?
Aye.
Counsel Greenberg?
No.
Counsel Grossman?
No.
Counsel Humphrey?
No.
Counsel Kalas?
Aye.
Counsel Kelly?
No.
Counsel Prinsman?
No.
Counsel Laredo?
Aye.
Counsel Leary?
No.
Counsel Lepoff?
No.
Counsel Lucas?
Aye.
Aye.
Counsel Malachi.
Aye.
Counsel Markowitz.
Aye.
Counsel Noel. Counsel Norton. Counsel Oliver. Counsel Wright. Sorry, Counsel Ryan. Counsel Wright. And President Albrecht.
No.
That motion fails. 10 ayes, 14 nays.
Okay. So the time is approximately 10:31, and we still have, let's see, we have two, well, we have Auburndale, and then we have to come back to Border Street. So we, we have another night's worth of meeting. I think this probably is a breaking place unless we want to try to finish the Walnut Street conversation tonight and start fresh with another area. I think we, it may be that we've already talked a lot about Walnut Street, about Newtonville, and maybe we could shorten the conversation and get the Newtonville amendments done in the next 10 minutes, perhaps? Pardon?
President, I'm going to suggest we adjourn.
Counsel Greenberg.
I'm going to move to adjourn. I'll make a formal motion.
Okay. I guess we can vote on it.
Before, President, point of order, before you adjourn, I would think a motion to postpone to date certainly would be in order.
Yes, we have to do that, but we have to, I think we'd like to vote on adjournment.
It's up to the...
Well, we have the next council meeting, President Meredith Baker.
Yeah.
We will have to vote.
However you want to phrase it, I'll defer to my colleague from Ward Seven. The intent is not to go further tonight.
Yes, so let's...
I think you accomplished the same result, but you need to get it over there. So I'd move postponement to the next council meeting.
Okay, well, but that, and then we can vote on adjournment. We have to postpone to the next council meeting either way. So let's do that. And our next council meeting is December 4th. December 4th. So all those in favor of post-pardon? No, we don't have a meeting on the 29th. Do you want to? Oh, Programs and Services has a meeting on the... Counsel Crinsman, are you meeting on the 29th at Programs and Services?
I haven't seen the poll back from Jackman to see whether folks were available. If folks were available, we are planning on meeting on the 29th.
Okay. So I think our next meeting is the December 4th. The 30th is open. We could entertain another special meeting and try and get this over with, but we don't have to decide that, well, we just postponed it to December 4th. No, we haven't voted. Can we, can you leave it up to November 30th or December 4th and hold the council for their availability?
Madam President, you could move to lay the item on the table, and then it would stay on the table, and then you could move to adjourn, and then you could have a special meeting if you needed it. Does that work?
So lay the item on the table can last until the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. So let's vote to, let's vote to lay it on, Counsel Gentile.
Motion was made to adjourn. It's not a debatable motion. I really don't understand what Counsel Baker, why he wants to lay something on the table or do this. Adjourn, and then we take up the item again at our next meeting. That's all we need to do.
Okay, yeah, if, so, as Counsel Flynn, as Ms. Flynn just said, if we adjourn, it would go automatically to the next meeting. We wouldn't have the opportunity to have a special meeting. So let's, Counsel Baker.
Counsel Baker, please.
Counsel Baker, what is your preference?
I wanted to give the opportunity for a special meeting if one could, we could get us all here. If not, then, but I think you lay it on the table, then you have the opportunity to do that. It accomplishes the same result.
Okay.
If you adjourn, it goes automatically to the next meeting.
Okay, so let's vote on laying it on the table. All those in favor, can we do this one a voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against that?
No.
Two noes. And now, three? Who were the three? Gentile, Crinsman, and Malachi. And now voting on adjournment. All those in favor of adjourning? We'll have to call the roll, I think, on this one.
Counsel Baker. Counsel Bowman.
Aye.
Counsel Crossley.
I'm sorry, we're voting on adjournment.
Adjournment.
I'm going to say no.
Counsel Danberg.
No.
Counsel Downs.
Aye.
Counsel Gentile.
Aye.
Counsel Greenberg. Counsel Grossman.
Aye.
Counsel Humphrey. Counsel Kalas.
Aye.
Counsel Kelly.
Aye.
Counsel Crinsman.
Aye.
Counsel Laredo.
Aye.
Counsel Leary.
I'm tired. Aye.
Counsel Lipoff.
Aye.
Counsel Lucas. Counsel Malachi. Counsel Markowitz.
Wanted to say, and the word is no, 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 no. Remember Sesame Street? No, aye.
Counsel Noel. Counsel Norton.
Aye.
Counsel Oliver.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Wright. And President Albrecht.
Aye.
The motion passes 21 to 3. We are adjourned.
Okay, and we will be in touch with you about your availability on November 30th? Thursday, I think? Thursday?